Good evening and welcome to the September 9th meeting of the Ames Community School District Board of Directors. I'll entertain a motion for approving the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda.
Second? Moved by Bankin, seconded by Perez. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes six zero. Director Perez, will you please read the purpose statement?
The Ames Community School District commits to equity and access that empowers every individual to reach their full personal and educational potential.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Reisner because she has the honor of introducing someone new to our community and staff.
Yes, so I wanted to take a minute. We had not introduced our fellows principals. So Lana LaSalle is with us. She is our fellows principal and has a great deal of experience. We were excited to have her expertise in curriculum and instruction and the work that she's done leading reading in her previous districts. And so the other thing I think that was really great about Lana is she has had both large and small school experience as well as working in some really diverse environments. So we are super thrilled to have her. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. And I'll echo her comments and I'll give you a welcome from the board. We're happy that you're here. All right, we will move on to information discussion items and I'll go ahead and read our statement regarding any public comments. Residents of the district, students attending the district, parents or guardians of students attending the district, and district staff members may address the board about any topic relevant to the district whether on the current agenda or not. Those who wish to speak must sign up at the beginning of the meeting. Speaker participation is limited to three minutes per item. The views and opinions of citizens addressing the board do not necessarily reflect those of the board, district administration, or staff. Speakers are to remember that Iowa law prohibits the board from discussing specific employees, students, or their performance. Student speakers will state their name and school; others will state their name and address. And our first discussion item this evening is our new high school and sustainability initiatives.
Hello, I'm here today to give you an update on sustainability for the new high school. This is a presentation that gives you information about the types of strategies we've implemented in the design. So we met early in the schematic design as a design team and we understood that the district was interested in a sustainable building, not necessarily going after a LEED certification, but doing the best thing possible and using that as a framework. So we selected the Cote Top Ten Measures of Sustainability, and I'll go through each of these here in a bit, but this is a system designed by the American Institute of Architects Committee on the Environment. And these measures have helped our team shape and frame sustainability strategies within the building. So the first strategy is Design for Integration. This is all about how the approach towards sustainability has informed the design concept. So when you think about these measures, these are everything from the LEED sort of energy and water use, but also looking a little bit deeper at wellness and sort of the holistic design perspective. So this one's really what's the big idea. And of course for us, as you remember, early on we talked a lot about the prairie. The design layout and site layout really originated from the prairie. The building is oriented so the educational spaces have views of the prairie. The commons area in the center of the building is the heart of the building and from it there are views and pathways to the prairie. And of course, here's the final design. The design also supports 21st century learning, collaboration, and research. All of that is due to the natural light and energy efficiency included in the building. The next measure is Design for Community. This one is all about how the community will benefit from the project. And of course, being a high school, there's a lot of great community benefits from the project that are inherent to it being a high school. But as you remember, we spent a lot of time early on in the visioning stage engaging the community, the public, the students, the district, the staff, everybody, and really understanding what the collective vision should be for the building. We use that to inform the design. And also, you know, when this building is done, there's a great opportunity to engage the community through athletics events, music and theater, and the new theater, and other opportunities that we may not even fathom today, but may be really possibilities down the road. And also, another great benefit for the community are the exterior spaces, the outdoor spaces. There's great pathways, connection to the bike trails, it's very a walkable site, so it'll be a great place for the community in the future. Measure number three is Design for Ecology. This is all about ways in which the design responds to the ecology of the place. So we think about landscaping, habitat, biodiversity. Again, we kind of come back to the prairie. Ames High School site is really a unique one when you think about high schools. Many times they're built on big open grass lawn. And you guys have a very different site. You have around 70 acres and only less than half of that is actually built with buildings. So when you think about preserving open space, which is one of the biggest, or one of the lead criteria that you can go for, your project exceeds that and exceeds the LEED standards. The fourth measure is Design for Water. This one's all about stormwater management and interior water efficiency. The city of Ames, stormwater requirements are very stringent and necessarily so. You can hear the rain coming down right now.
I was thinking, that's timely.
It is. This project meets those requirements. They are pretty tough, which is why we've had to get a little creative with some of our stormwater strategies. The site runoff has been designed to pre-development standards, which means the site essentially, the built site essentially acts like a native prairie in the amount of water that it retains and cleans before it releases. So we have reduced existing runoff. Right now, you're not really doing a lot of detention on the site, so you have a lot more, or a lot less runoff in the future design, and also improved water quality. So we have the underground stormwater detention basins, which are probably going in pretty soon. And then we'll have above-ground detention basins and swales. And then, of course, the prairie is Mother Nature's greatest stormwater management strategy. And we're doing our best to steer clear of it, protect it, and make sure it's preserved. Indoor water efficiency. This one's really a LEED credit. We talked about what target we wanted to hit with our design. We're targeting 35% indoor water savings, which if you know much about the LEED credit system, that'd get you two credits, which is pretty good. We're doing that with low-flow fixtures. We're doing it with sensor controls on lavatories and toilets. And also, we'll take a look at all of the process equipment, which are the dishwashers and all the other types of equipment that use water. Make sure we're picking equipment that does not, that's more water efficient. Design for Economy. This is all about how a project does more with less. And of course, we had great bid results a couple of weeks ago, so we've done a lot to bring the project in on budget and give you the program square footage that has been asked for. One component of, it's actually a code requirement in the state of Iowa, is a lifecycle cost analysis. And this is really looking at the energy systems in the building and analyzing utility costs and choosing systems that reduce your utility costs and have real payback over time. The numbers here compare the base building code, like code base buildings, that's the minimum you would have to build per the code to our building, the proposed building. And we project that there are around $278,000 of savings per year over the code building. So if you just built code minimum, you'd be zero savings, and this building is much more energy efficient over the code building, so you're saving a lot there. You're also going to save in reduced maintenance costs per year. And that adds up to $4.7 million of savings over a 25-year lifecycle. Measure six is one that we all know very well, Design for Energy. This is how much energy does the project use. So we'll get into the weeds just a little bit here, a little bit of an energy education here. Energy Use Intensity is how we compare buildings across many different types and many different kinds of energy that they use. It's a measurement that combines the total energy per square foot per year, so that includes everything from your heating, your cooling, and electrical. Combines it all together so you can compare apples to apples across many different building types. So this project is projected to have an EUI of 40. The code baseline is 53, so we're doing a 25% reduction, and that's mainly due to the geothermal system. And then in addition, we've incorporated all LED lighting throughout the building, which is saving around 33% in lighting energy. And of course, we'll have the vacancy centers and the building automation system to continue to help manage the use of lighting and other heating and cooling systems. I put this graph in here just for a little bit of fun. This is OPN's projects. We've analyzed our EUI for all of our K-12 projects, and these are some of the main projects that we've done in K-12 over the last four years. These range from elementary schools, which are fairly low energy users, to high schools. So you'll see, we've got Ames High School in the orange rectangle, and the adjacent, the two adjacent ones on either side are both high schools. So you can see where Ames is stacking up with some of the other projects that we've done just here in Iowa. And the dark line above all of it is the national average EUI. So we're doing really, really good. We are more than half below the national average in energy use. You'll notice that the project way to the right is Green County High School, and that project's doing a little bit better than ours, but that's because they don't have a pool. Pools are, pools and food service are big energy users. Measure seven is Design for Wellness. This looks at how sustainable design can support occupant comfort, health, and wellness. So we look at natural lighting, connection to nature, and exercise. Daylighting is a critical component in an educational facility. It reduces stress, increases your visual comfort, helps with emotion and mood, and positively impacts circadian system functioning, which is really good for high schoolers. So in the design, we've incorporated classrooms with the windows and shades for glare control. Remember, all of our classroom, main classroom wings are looking out over the prairie, so we have a lot of windows in those areas. Athletic spaces also have natural light with diffuse translucent panels. And the commons area has natural light and views with two big walls of glass and then a large clear story that runs the length of the building. The building also promotes wellness with an active design. We, the building is large, high schoolers do a lot of steps each day. We've incorporated stairs for convenience so that people can use the stairs rather than the elevator, which saves energy and gets your steps in. We've incorporated inviting workout facilities like the track and the competition gym and the weight room. And then the site itself has a lot of great opportunity for wellness and exercise. And also the great outdoor dining space to connect people to nature on a nice day for Measure eight is Design for Resources. This is all about making an informed selection of materials and products that reduce product cycle environmental impacts while enhancing building performance. So thinking about materials very strategically in selection and placement. So we think about durability and maintainability, particularly in a high school. We want to make sure that the materials we're putting into place are going to stand the test of time, that you're not going to have to replace them and throw out old material and bring in new often. But we also are trying to balance that institutional feel with a warm and inviting quality. We want to have surfaces that are impact resistant, so you'll see the ceramic tile on the hallway walls. And then in addition, of course, exterior materials are always weather resistant and long-lasting. We have lots of precast and brick and some metal panel, which will stand the test of Measure nine is Design for Change. This is about how the building promotes resilience and future flexibility and adaptability. You know, obviously Ames has some threat of flooding, we know that. This building's doing its part by managing the stormwater runoff in an effective way. We have a storm shelter for resilience. We're incorporating safety and security features like the secure vestibule and camera systems throughout the building. And then we're also promoting flexibility. We'll have flexibility on a day-to-day basis with furniture, but also we've designed most of the walls in the educational wings with metal studs and drywall, so they can be removed and moved easily down the road if needed. The last measure is Design for Discovery. Sustainable design strategies that best, so sustainable design strategies are things that are not just now, they're things that you can think about and keep working on as the building is inhabited and as you grow into it. So this is sort of discovering that along the way and understanding that discovery can influence behavior. We were contacted by a student group curious about sustainability in the building, and so our sustainability director, Tate Walker, visited with them, and they wrote a really great article about the possibilities within the building, which is exciting to see students getting intrigued with the building and wanting to understand more and wanting to take it farther down the road. Which leads me to my last slide here. Sustainability is not a one-time effort that ends when the building is completed. It's ongoing and it can continue to improve over time. So we just jotted down a few opportunities that you can continue to explore down the road. This building will have a tremendous opportunity to connect sustainability to curriculum. We'll have the PV panel array that can be used for education. It's the ground mount PV that students can see and probably touch. The roof can support PV as well, so that's an opportunity down the road if desired. And if you start to put, look at PV and other options like that, you may achieve a net zero carbon building status. And what that means is that you've got a highly efficient building, which you have, and you're fully powered by onsite or offsite renewable sources. And then the last point is just to continue to celebrate the prairie. When the existing building's removed, there's a great opportunity to engage with it. There's already a lot of really great signage out there, but there's an opportunity to continue to develop that and develop the educational opportunities around that. So with that, questions?
What questions do we have for Kristen?
I have a question. Could you talk a little bit more about the PV on the roof? Are those solar panels?
Yes. PV is photovoltaic. Those are solar panels.
And so, like, how many can you put up there and what will they, like?
So we have not included photovoltaics on, we have not included both, so, we have not included solar panels on the roof as a part of the design. That's an opportunity for the future. The roof is very large, so there's a significant area that you could put the photovoltaic panels.
So I remember when we were having this conversation, there was some conversation about if you wanted a certain kind of solar panels, you had to have a certain kind of roof. That's not, no. So we can, it's just about space.
It's about space and weight.
And so if we filled the whole roof, do you have any sense about what kind of savings would be generated or what kind of power?
I don't.
If you don't know that, okay.
I don't. It would depend on the panel and some other factors there.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
I have a few questions. Thanks for coming and talking about this specific part of the project. And yeah, I'm going to get a little bit into the weeds because it's things that our public sees when they're going to walk in the new building and definitely our students are going to use every day. So my first question is in relation to, you mentioned low-flow toilets?
Mm-hmm.
Are those going to be like the ones that some of us have seen where it's a low-flush, high-flush type of fixture or some other type?
Yes, it'd be the dual flush.
Oh, okay, okay, great, great. And then the other one is the, you mentioned a slow-flow urinal. What about, did you consider the actually no-flow, in other words, waterless?
We did. We've used them on past projects. Usually they get replaced with traditional urinals due to maintenance issues and so on.
So you investigated that and?
Unsuccessful results.
Made the recommendation to us to go that route. Okay, great. And then hand, I know I'm focusing on restrooms here, sorry, for a minute, but they use a lot of energy, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then hand drying. What are you suggesting for a fixture in there? To stick with paper, which has its pluses and minuses, or to actually go with, you know, air drying, which also has its pluses and minuses?
Sure. We actually have a combination of that in the building. In the larger restrooms around the kind of center of the building, we have hand dryers. And then in the classroom wings where we're worried about noise, we have paper towels there.
Okay, sounds like a good balance. Great, great. My last question and/or statement, when you talked about the roof being utilized in the future for the school district to basically lease the roof out to a third party that would then actually install and maintain that for us. We designed the structure so that it can handle any of that weight for that purpose. We made sure that, you know, we weren't having some part of the high school roof that wouldn't sustain or support that type of thing in the future.
Yep.
Okay, great, great, because I think that's going to be a great opportunity down the road. The way that tax credits are set up, it's difficult for public entities right now, whether it's a school district or another governmental agency, or to really afford to be cost-effective. And what we've seen throughout Iowa and the Midwest really, or around the country, is where it's advantageous for a third-party independent business to just lease the space of a roof for a governmental agency, and then we can get some savings and hopefully get to that net zero goal down the road.
That'd be pretty cool.
Yeah, that'd be great. Okay, superb. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming to present. Would you mind telling me, I don't see where the bike, where the bike parking would be? And if, like, where their route, because we're talking about alternative transportation, I just was wondering where that would be.
Yeah, I can jump back here very quick. So we have bike parking included at all of the entries to the building, the main entry. So it's, I can't point to it on here. So there's just south of the main entrance on the screen there is labeled bike racks. We'll also have them up on the north faculty entrance, as well as the pool entrance, and near the stadium entry. I think we were targeting 250 bike racks at this time. Bike racks are also one of those items that if you find that students are wanting more or that you need more, they're very easy to add in as well. There's plenty of space here for them to be added.
Okay, great, thank you. My other comment is about the solar panels. I really, I really wish we, I really wish that that was at the end, like, at the end of the building, we would have solar panels. That was always my vision. And, but I would like to know, is there anything that needs to be done to, other than space? Do we need anything done to like hook it up? Is there something that we need to?
Yeah, there would be some alterations in the electrical room that you would need to make to put an array on the roof, some additional equipment and things like that that you'd need to include.
I think I would like us to, if all possible, if we could still somehow engage community conversations about this, because I just feel like if we, if we're doing this, I just, that's just a big piece in the whole sustainability. Because I like all the other pieces. I love the prairie. I love that they're looking at the prairie. I also wish that we, we were doing something more than what the land gave us, right? That we are putting work into preserving that prairie, not just taking what the prairie's given us. So I would like us to try to, I don't know, I know there are community groups in town that they're talking about solar, and I'd like us to engage in conversations with them. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much for coming. I know that this was a, came out of our work session this summer that we desired to gain more information from you, and so appreciate that you came and provided us some good information. So thank you. Is there any, hold on Jerry, is there any comments from the public on the new high school sustainability initiatives? Seeing none, we will go ahead and move to the Mitchell Elementary Additions and Model 2020.
So after I left Kristen up here all alone, I probably should have, I realized I should have introduced her. Kristen Lewis with OPN Architects is the lead architect for the new high school construction project, and she's just the leader of an awesome team that we've had, so apologize for that, that's on me. So getting to Mitchell Elementary. We started out in April and engaged an architect, and since then we assembled a group of principals and a couple, the principal, a couple teachers, special ed, technology, and facilities to go through and develop a program and then go ahead and proceed with preparing a design for the additions. The project was started out in 2018 when we passed the bond. We included $5 million for additions to three elementaries. And nominally that included adding six classrooms, so that got us started with that. So with, we decided as we were looking at enrollment and working with the superintendent and some of the data that we have, that Mitchell was in the most need, and so we had to start somewhere, so we went ahead and began with Mitchell. As we went through the design process or started kind of developing the program, not only adding the six classrooms, but there's a couple things that we needed to or I wanted to take care of and addressed as we're being able to imply some capital improvements to the building. And that includes dehumidification. When we had the previous construction, we didn't properly address the dehumidification, so now we have a chance to be able to rectify that. Also, we had a challenge with sound in the music area, in the practice area, so we wanted to address that. There's storage space, storage needs too is an important aspect. So as we tried to factor these in to this next phase of capital improvements here at Mitchell, we wanted to be able to try and take a big comprehensive approach and even look out to when this project was going to be completed and be ready for the school. With the possibility of the potential conversations about a tenant center, we didn't want to get ourselves backed into a corner, so we also want to try and keep that in the back of our mind. Although we're not designing for a tenant center, we want to be able to keep our options open. So that was another aspect that we considered during this process. So the architects, Rosalind Mackey-Harris are the architects, and they worked with us and developed several And they worked with us and developed several designs. I think we're up to about 10 or 11 different options for this design. Not really options, but progressions, let me call that. And during this process then, we engage a superintendent at key points in time so that we could be respectful of the, the amount of time that's needed from the superintendent. So we were, we were able to get some direction and be able to get focused on what we needed to do and to be able to define the needs for this building at this time. So this is the proposed floor plan. And we look at, on the left side, we have an addition there that's primarily shown in the green with a little bit of yellow. And then also at the bottom of the darker green, I don't have it. There's two classrooms that end on, get added on for building construction at the end of the kindergarten, first grade wing. Then inside, it shows some other areas that are impacted. Some special ed accommodations we're making are the level one, which is the green spot just inside the existing building, kind of south of the gym. There's also a couple of other green areas that we're looking at that, that'll be addressed. I think they're identified here through the key on the left side. The mechanical space, we have that centrally located. We'll have a, a single dedicated air unit that will be able to provide dehumidification for the fresh air. That gets, we have some efficiency with that because we're going to dehumidify the air and then distribute it into the building. And utilize the geothermal system with that. Then we'll be able to move the music practice room across the hall and kind of next to that entrance in between the two addition, the, the two buildings. And that gets them away from adjacent rooms and then separated from the rest of the building. So it won't cause any of the, the noise transfer between the two buildings. So if, are there any questions about that? I think I'll pause here for a second to answer any questions. So we'll go ahead to the fun part, the budget. So because this is one portion of the projects that were included in the bond, I'm tracking all three of the additions at the same time. And with this one here, tried to identify this sheet here that shows the, the budget on the left-hand side for each one. And I've got it listed to start out with Mitchell. And I have these projected out for the future when they're going to actually occur or be bid so that we can account for some escalation. So part of what the, the potential cost or the needed, that ends up with the needed funding has to do with adding escalation. So our budget doesn't escalate. It's fixed at $5 million. But as we postpone work out into the future, then we have, I need to account for escalation. Basically, that's fancy word for cost of living increase. We're not, at this point in time, we're out of ways for Meeker and Edwards. So we wanted, either way, they're, the six classroom additions for each one are based on the same footprint. So whether we do one in 2021 and the other in 2022, that's, the difference between those two reflects the escalation. We have a current cost estimate that we had prepared, an independent estimate of probable construction costs that indicates that our project cost should be around three and a half million for Mitchell. I've went ahead and projected the other two based on project information that we had previously. The funding sources then I've identified and we distribute prorated basically the cost for the $5 million on the bond. So that's how it distributes between Mitchell and Edwards and Meeker. We had also included another $2 million that we have dedicated from the save or the state sales tax. And then I had allocated $160,000 for the dehumidification out of PEPAL funds. So we can see where our total funding is and then our shortfall, where we're at. And I'm proposing that because of the, the good bits that we got received from the high school, that we have still some money allocated or available through the safe fund. And eventually, once we get the revenue purpose statement approved again, that'll put us in an even better position. So I think with PEPAL money and the safe fund, then we'll be able to pick up the, the difference or the additional funding that's needed. Any questions?
Well, thank you, Jerry. And just, it's worth noting that multiple times throughout this project, Jerry's brought this to the facilities committee. So we've been vetting it, throughout it. So I just want to thank you and your team. You've done a great job. I also just want to highlight, it's kind of eye opening to see that the cost estimate difference between Mitchell and the other two buildings. That's on purpose because as Jerry said, there's some deficiencies we're, we're making changes to at Mitchell. It was originally a remodel in addition, which adds to some unique challenges and costs associated with it. So Meeker and Edwards are more ready to go for additions and that's why that cost difference is there. So very supportive of this. I think we've done a good job outlining the concept. My only question, I guess, is for Superintendent Reisner is talking about maybe the attendance issues regarding the classrooms being full and what that looks like kind of going forward.
Yeah. I think one of the, the great things that we did on this was add additional classrooms. When, I don't know Jerry, at what point that happened. So at least we would be in a position that we would open with plenty of classrooms. That being said, there is the ability to easily add on to this building in the future. However, I think looking long-term at what our elementary plan is for buildings that are, that are nearing capacity and what our actual educational model, that we want to provide students, what that looks like as well in the future. So those are some great conversations for us to have as we move into some work sessions this year around enrollment. And we will be looking for, looking, working with a demographer to kind of look at what our growth and expansion and, and where some of those recommendations might come in to how we structure this in the future.
I have a question. When do you anticipate Meeker and Edwards getting their additions?
Pardon?
When do you anticipate Meeker and Edwards getting their additions?
We would follow those the next successive years. So I'd look at being able to do just one building at a time each year.
Thank you.
Any other question?
I, I have a question, but I don't want to interrupt you.
No, I was just going to ask, are there any other questions?
Yeah, I have one question. Can you go back to the, the diagram shows the additions? So if I heard you correctly, what you said is that you could still add on if you need to? Is that correct?
Yes. So we basically extend addition number two then to the south. So we'd be able to have the opportunity to almost double that in size.
But that, and then let's say you did that. You, let's say you put on another addition on to addition number two. Is there then, is that then the end of the ability to add additions to this building?
It doesn't end our ability, but it, it ends our reasonable approach to putting additions. Because we start to get sacrificing the, the land area. You need the space. Imagine yourself in a room with eight-year-olds and you're going to shut the door and you're going to be in that room all day. So when I kind of imagine that, I said, we need playgrounds. So we don't, I don't want to sacrifice that. Plus it's just, it's just good, so.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. So I think just to summarize, yes, there's always the ability to expand into those areas that are playgrounds. But that probably isn't the best educational approach for students.
Right. No, that's why I was asking. Because I guess what I had heard or what I understood was that each of the schools was built with the option to add an addition on and that this was it. So I was just surprised to hear you say that there was still more room for other additions. Is that true for the other elementaries as well?
Yeah, we're pushing the threshold here with this, the second addition. So I think that's where, at this point in time, it's, I think it's a little bit too early or too bold to be able to, to predict that. And there's a lot of more dynamics in the community and, and the layout and the growth, I think, that'll come into factor, so.
Thank you.
The biggest concept was when we built the elementaries originally, we made a common space to accommodate like a four-section building at Edwards. So the cafeteria is for a four-section, even though there's three now. This one was going to struggle with the common space because those areas aren't built as bad.
Right.
And it's primarily, well, the media center as well as the cafeteria. So that's where the cafeteria gets a little bit snug, which would require additional lunches.
Thank you.
I, I just want to clarify one thing that I heard. Not all the schools were designed to add some more because Sawyer, can you add some more to Sawyer? I, I just didn't think that Sawyer and Fellows had.
So Fellows was built out to the four-section building. So that's been maximized. Sawyer, there's still some space on the property to be able to do an addition. We're kind of keying up with five acres plus one acre per hundred students. So if you get a four-section building with an average of 25 students per section, that gets you to 600 or students plus the five acres, which gets us to 11 acres. And I think that's kind of the tightest configuration you're looking at. And our building, our sites are right at 11 acres or just under 11 acres. Whereas Mitch, Mitchell is at 10 acres. So that's where that, that land and the space kind of gets in there from a mathematical perspective.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jerry? Thank you very much for the information, Jerry. Very helpful. Are there any comments from the public on the Mitchell Elementary additions and remodel? Seeing none, we will move to board committee updates. There is nothing in our information. Are there any committees that would like to provide an update?
The equity committee is meeting tomorrow at 10 o'clock, is it? Yes, it's 10 o'clock. And Director Fensen and I spoke and I will be taking over as the co-facilitator until the election comes in which all of our names will be in a hat, I guess, and we'll decide. So yeah, excited about that.
Any other reports? All right. We will go ahead and move to the public forum. And the first individual signed up is Jessica Siddler.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Jessica Siddler and I teach at Sawyer Elementary School as a third grade teacher. I am part of the Ames chapter of the Anti-Racism Collaborative Organization, or ARC. We are a group of educators that provides space for authentic reflection and action on the impact of white supremacy on our lives, both personally and professionally, and on our school communities. We know the impact of white supremacy is felt by both black and brown students and families, as well as white students and families, although with very different consequences. On behalf of our organization, I would like to thank you for the steps that you have taken to move forward or move towards a more equitable district for our students. As a staff, we have seen you hire an equity director and an associate principal at the middle school for school improvement, culture and equity. You have published an equity report and are beginning equity audits in different buildings across the district. You have also continued the critical consciousness training for our staff. We have seen your commitment to equity in this district and applaud these changes. It is partly because of these changes, excuse me, partly because of these trainings and changes that we are here today. Our critical consciousness has been awakened and strengthened through those trainings. And we have gained knowledge and confidence to speak out against injustices we see in our lives, both socially and professionally. We at ARC feel a disconnect between your stated priorities and action steps towards equity and your latest act of bringing on an additional school resource officer to the Ames Middle School. What we really, what, what is really important to keep in mind moving forward is that we don't see this discussion in terms of individuals. We believe that Officer Schaefer is very kind and Officer Jensen is likely a good person as well. But this isn't about being a good or a bad person. This is a structural oppression and has nothing to do with whether we like individuals or not and has everything to do with the impact on our students and families. So in the interest of really hearing us tonight, we ask that you pause first and hear our statement as considerations of structure. Thank you.
Steph shares. Good evening. My name is Steph shares and I work at Ames Middle School as an extended learning program teacher. And I also coach at Ames High, cross-country and track. As Jessica said, we stand with you, the board, in serving our community and working hard toward positive outcomes for all students, especially as stated in our district mission, students with marginalized identities. In considering the district's recent decision to add an additional SRO to Ames Middle School, we know you all care deeply about students, about our student body, and that you made this decision with the best of intentions. However, it's important to note that impact matters more than intent. Before my fellow ARC members explain in more detail the history of policing in schools, the research behind its detriment specifically to students of color and the lived experience some of our educators have had with police in our buildings, we'd like to first spend some time on this crucial concept. As a white, able-bodied, cisgender person, I personally carry a lot of privileged identities. Many times, these privileged identities have shielded me from truly understanding the impact of my words or actions. I've made mistakes despite my intentions. I've participated and continue to participate in oppressive systems despite my intentions. I am not here tonight to question Officer Schaefer or Officer Johnson's intentions. I'm here with ARC to shift the conversation from intent to impact. Because what a conversation about intent versus impact is really about is de-centering my voice when I'm the person in the conversation with a privileged identity. I want to put that in the context of AMS and police at AMS. When I consider the intent in adding police to a school building, a place of learning, I center my view as a middle-class white woman. My worldview, due to my privileged identities, is that the police protect me, my things, my family, my children. However, if I de-center my voice and I center the voices of people with marginalized identities, particularly black and brown families, I hear the impact. I hear the impact of police in a middle school. Students seeing police as someone who might hurt them, students that might be scared, tense. Please listen as our next speakers provide both historical and contemporary context that will help us hear the impact of police in a school building. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Riley Drake. As part of ARC of Ames, thank you for your time tonight. In 1953, the first school resource officer positions were created in Flint, Michigan. The SRO program in Flint was branded as an attempt to improve community relations between the city's youth and the local police department. By 1972, urban school districts in four east states had some form of school policing infrastructure in their schools. Police presence was almost immediately accompanied by policy changes that criminalized students, particularly those of color. The expansion and increased reliance on school policing coincided with the state's desire to suppress growing social movements against inequality. Sparked by black youth in the South demanding an end to Jim Crow segregation and racial violence, the 1950s ushered in new social, political and legal possibilities for racial justice in the United States. But those attempts to dismantle systemic discrimination, like student protests, were often responded to with displays of police power aimed at suppressing and delegitimizing the movement. The rhetoric of law and order emerged in the 1950s as Southern officials and law enforcement generated opposition to the civil rights movement. For over a decade, law enforcement agencies made a concerted effort to link crime to civil disobedience, direct action tactics and organizing. The War on Drugs and the Violent Crime Control and Law Enforcement Act of 1994 radically expanded zero tolerance policies and funding for policing in schools and communities. The call for more policing and law enforcement strategies. The call for more policing and law enforcement strategies in schools reached a critical juncture after the 1999 Columbine High School shooting in Colorado. While this attack happened at a primarily white suburban school, Black and Latinx students suffered from the aftermath of expanded school policing policies and practices. The devastating school shootings across the nation continue to be used as justifications to enact policies that increase the number of police and weapons in schools and that actually make schools less safe for Black and Brown students. The increased police presence and militarization of schools has led to a rise in school-based arrests and to Black students being arrested at more than twice the rate of white students. If historical and contemporary policies and practices teach us anything, it is that the presence of police in schools reflects a continued effort to control and criminalize Black and Brown youth and deny their opportunity to learn in safe, supportive schools.
Hi, I'm Jenny Coffey, 4257 Eisenhower Lane. Hello. My name is Jenny Coffey. I am a teacher at Ames Middle School and the parent of a fourth-grade student at Sawyer Elementary, as well as a member of ARC. Thank you for your time and consideration this evening. I want to start out by sharing that even as I have read more and more about the history and reality of policing in schools, and as I have grown in my understanding of critical consciousness and how systemic oppression works in institutions, I still, to this day, have to fight against the voice in my head that hears what Ms. Drake says and wants to respond, surely we wouldn't do it that way here. Officer Schaefer, I know from researching, is a member of the National Association of School Resource Officers, so I know that means he's been through at least 40 hours of required training that includes information on teen brain development and implicit bias. So my voice is, surely we'll do it right here, right? But here's the thing. Our best intentions in the past have not resulted in outcomes that are equitable. As evidenced by the Equity Committee report shared by this body, we can see that despite our best intentions, students of color in Ames schools receive disciplinary referrals at a rate that far outpaces that of our white students. To suggest that this inequity wouldn't continue to play out as we increase police involvement in our schools is naive and unsupported. And regardless of what kind of training our SROs receive or what intentions they may have, the fact remains that for some students, their mere presence, regardless of their actions, negatively impacts their learning environment. There are many examples from research that I could share, but I instead want to share a personal anecdote from the first day of school this year. I spent a good portion of my first day of school introducing my sixth-grade students to the middle school, showing them where their lockers would be, teaching them how to use a combination lock, helping them figure out where on earth music studies and FCS classes were located. As I was walking around the corner with one such student on the first day of school, we came face-to-face with a smiling Officer Johnson in full uniform. I was standing shoulder-to-shoulder with my student as we walked, and I could literally feel her body tense as Officer Johnson came into view. We said hello, he said hello, and we continued walking. After we passed him, she turned around to look at him again, turned back to me, and whispered, "Why is there a cop here?" And to be honest, I didn't have a great answer for her. The one that I gave Officer Johnson is just here to keep us more safe, felt forced and dishonest. This type of answer also establishes something of a barrier, because many students of colors will immediately sense, "This white woman doesn't get it," when they hear these canned answers that don't align to their lived experiences. But I also want to take a moment to point out here that I know that students and families of color are not monolithic, and there might very well be those that support police in schools. But I am advocating for my students based on what history and evidence shows. And I'm advocating for my students, like the one I just described, who likely was unable to focus well after this encounter and may have experienced trauma within her school. She clearly didn't feel safer as a result of Officer Johnson's presence, and I have read enough to know that there is very little evidence to suggest that schools with SROs are any safer than schools without, and much evidence to suggest that outcomes for already marginalized students, such as students of color and students with disabilities, are far less safe. I know this is not the kind of climate that Ames wants to promote. I realize that school safety is a topic on everyone's mind. There has been no shortage of high-profile school shootings since Columbine, and several in 2018 alone. There is a public outcry to make our schools safer, and I understand that our criticism of efforts to increase police presence in schools can seem like an attack on the idea that our students deserve the most protected environment we can possibly provide. But there is nothing stopping us from pursuing both goals: keeping children safe and insisting on racially just policies. Ames schools serve an amazing diversity of children, and the very best policies are those that keep all children safe. We should not settle for a system that sets up a false choice between educational equity on one hand and safety on the other. Our children deserve both. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Grimm. I'm a mom of a fifth grader and a first grader at Edwards. I teach eighth-grade literacy at the middle school. And until last year, I served in the role of juvenile court liaison at the middle school. During that time, I witnessed this district funnel many 11- to 14-year-old children into the criminal justice system by charging them with crimes committed at school. Infractions like theft of Chromebooks that were recovered and returned, disorderly conduct for squirrely middle school behavior. And almost all of these students were already marginalized. We did make major improvements, focusing on restorative practices over criminalizing students during my time in that role. But there is a lot of work to do. And I know this: it is wrong for schools to criminalize children. And as you heard from my colleagues this evening, we know that police presence in schools increases the likelihood of just that. We'd like to end our time tonight with some questions we hope you will take into consideration. Do have copies of these questions that I will leave here. How does the decision to hire an additional SRO fit within the Equity work that this district says is the number-one goal? Currently, many Ames Community School District educators are engaging in critical consciousness training with Dr. Spikes and Swalwell. To what extent will our SORs be required to participate in this training? What are the specific duties of the SROs in the Ames Community School District? How will these duties be made transparent to all stakeholders? We have lost professional school counselors at both the middle school and high school. The state of Iowa recommends that for every 250 students, there is at least one licensed professional school counselor to serve them. Why is the school district willing to fund even partially the salary of a police officer over a counselor? In recent articles in the Ames Tribune, an SOR is quoted as saying that a large part of his work will be, quote, "shaping the perceptions of young people," end quote, "Sometimes what people see on social media is not positive, but once they meet an officer in uniform in real life, they can realize that we are actually really helpful and kind," which is something they might not see on Facebook. These statements, so well-intentioned, are problematic because they place the blame of poor perceptions of police officers on those who point out unjust policing rather than on unjust policing practices. How will this district ensure that our SORs understand that they, like us, are a part of an institution that has historically oppressed people of color? What data has been collected around SOR and student interactions in this district in the past? How will that data be disseminated to the public? How will it be collected and disseminated moving forward? What policies, if any, will be implemented to protect students from overpolicing and racial profiling? And finally, to what extent were families and communities consulted about the addition of the SOR prior to his hiring? How will these conversations be continued? We believe these questions are important enough for the board to take up by putting further discussions of SORs in our schools on a future agenda. And lastly, we encourage you to read "We Came to Learn," a report released in September 2018 by the Advancement Project and Alliance for Educational Justice, which is a call to action for police re-schools. On behalf of ARC, we thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. I think that's the last speaker. Thank you very much for sharing your information with us this evening. And I do want the board to know, as Director Colton did comment.
Can we get that list of questions?
Is that the copies of the questions? Thank you. And then I did want to let what Director Colton was speaking about, this is on the agenda at the Equity Committee tomorrow, so. All right. I will go ahead and move to consent items, and I'll entertain a motion. I move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Moved by Benkin, seconded by Perez. That's okay? I was, yep, I was. So the gifts to the, oh, sorry. Gifts to the district, Ames Education Foundation, Vibe Nutrition, Iowa Lions International, North Walmart and Vision Center, Kathy &amp; Cory Fitzgerald, ISU Sorority and Fraternity Community, Finesse Spas and Salon, Neil &amp; Kathy Dietz, Kristy Minion, and Ames Golden K. Kowanas. It's been moved by Benkin, seconded by Perez. Although it's in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes six-zero. Onto action items. New high school bid issuance number two.
I move the board award the four contracts for bid packages three-dash-one, seven-dash-one, eleven-dash-one, and thirteen-dash-three, as indicated in Ames High School Bid Issuance Number Two, recommended award summary for base bid and alternates number one, two, three, four, five, and six.
Second. It's been moved by Deardorff, seconded by Colton. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes six-zero. Superintendent's contract.
I move the board approve the 20- to 22 superintendent contract as presented, with the increase in salary being retroactive to July 1st, 2019.
Second.
Moved by Perez, seconded by Rosser. Discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Passes six-zero. Items from the board.
Yes, I have one.
Okay.
I just want to make a note here. At our last board meeting, when we were having a discussion regarding the shot put facility that is going to be temporarily put at Fellows Elementary, I want to apologize to my fellow members of the board and some of the district staff for inaccurately talking about the fact that we hadn't addressed it in previous meetings. And I have to admit, I just forgot that we did address it in April and approve going forward those architectural things, so I wanted to publicly, I've already apologized to them after that, but I just wanted to do it publicly. And again, I apologize for that.
Any other comments?
I wanted to say I had the pleasure of going to Ames Pride over the weekend, and it wouldn't be Pride without rain. But it was a great turnout. There were a lot of people there, and there were just a lot of booths, and it was really, really encouraging.
It wasn't as bad a rain as the first Ames Pride.
No, that was a mud fest.
That was a mud fest.
Yeah.
I just want to note, part of the gifts to the district was Ames Education Foundation's $10,000 donation for, or SOS, to support our students. And we have a great foundation. And again, anything we can do as a community to support our foundation and help our school district as an extension, we fully welcome that. So they do great work, and we're very appreciative of it.
So one of the things that I have in my discussions with Jenny and Alan is that as I hear requests during the meeting of staff, that I try to keep a list and so that we are trying to be mindful of the requests and making sure that there is consensus from the board in directing staff, especially if there is a direction that may be cumbersome in time, we're going to ask Jenny to come back and provide us with an idea of how much information or, pardon me, how much time a request may mean so that we can be, as we are moving forward, and supporting her and setting the expectation that the purpose and priorities have been laid out, that we are mindful when we ask questions that may be a bigger undertaking than we realize. So tonight, I heard a request for looking for more information on the PV panels on the roof, so looking at the committee in terms of directing it to the committee on, and what I heard was direction on cost and feasibility. Am I stating that just what that would look like at this point? Okay. I just wanted to make sure I captured that, so. Okay? So Jenny, I'll take a look at them and let us know. All right? Items from the superintendent.
And bring that, just to clarify, and I'll bring that back to the next meeting. Is that?
Yes, in terms of, there's some times that we ask a question and we can do it like that. But that's what we're trying to navigate through, if there's any things that we don't realize when we're asking for the information, that it's actually a larger thing.
This one I don't know, so also.
Okay. Items from the superintendent.
Just a couple. I wanted to let you know that we, as our admin, district admin team, which includes our district-level directors, executive directors, and principals, we took a look at our goals and priorities for this year. They're from the priorities and kind of what our focused areas will be in relation to the data that we have from last year. So the staff has been working on turning those into measurable SMART goals, which we're hoping that in October, we'll be able to bring them, that first meeting in October for a work session with the board to go through and do some work together again like we did last fall. So at that time, we would have good data and some direction on where we're headed with those to be able to share with the board. And really, those are the big two things that I had tonight to talk about.
And anything on the board calendar that you want to highlight? We do have at our next meeting.
At our next meeting, we have a joint meeting with United at 4:30, or five, sorry, 5:30, not 4:30, 5:30. And then that will be, an agenda will be coming out. What'd you say?
We just can't get that meeting straight, can we?
No. We kind of thought it was this week, and then, most of us thought it was this week. Some of us knew it wasn't. And then, yeah, so 5:30, joint meeting with United here, and we're working on the agenda for that.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Rosser, seconded by Perez. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes six-zero. Thank you.